My name is Josh Plant, I live in downtown Ashland. I was grew, I was born in Ashland in 1982 at King's Daughters Medical Center. Grew up on Gartrell Street playing on Charles Russell Playground when I was little and also grew up going back and forth between my mom and my dad's house, between Southern Ohio and Sims Valley, Ohio and Ashland where my dad lived. And I graduated high school in 2000 and started college soon after at OU Southern. And like a lot of kids out of high school, I struggled a little bit and trying to find my way and trying to really figure out what I want to do. And resources were tough and trying to provide for myself and get myself through school was tough and I started working a couple of different jobs. Worked at Kroger for awhile and then started working at C.R. Thomas, which a lot of people remember from down on Greenup Avenue and really tried to work my way through school and it was tough and there were a few years that I wasn't even able to go to school. So just kind of worked my way through that and really just tried to make it for myself. And luckily in 2005 was able to get a job at King's Daughters and I was working in security and parking cars and King's Daughters provided me with really a stable income so that I could focus on getting myself through school. I was working a lot and going to school the same day and it was a tough schedule but looking back I'm really glad that I was able to do that then. In 2007, I finally graduated college and got through and that was a huge accomplishment for me. But like a lot of kids out of college, I was having trouble finding that first opportunity. And I have interviews that were, they were fine with getting me to the last interview, but I would always lose out to the person with more experience. So I kind of found out that I had to look in other places. So I had been trying to get a job at King's Daughters and my dad came to me and so my dad is retired steel worker at AK Steel and my grandfather, my great-grandfather were as well, I was fourth generation to eventually work at AK Steel. And my dad came to me and he said, "Hey, there's an internship available at the mill." Now, as a kid that, one of the first people to go through college, to get a college degree from my family, I thought, you know, thank God I have a degree and now I never have to work in the steel mill. And I kind of gave that up and decided to go ahead and take the internship at AK Steel and looking back, it was just, it was one of the best decisions I've ever made. And I started working in the TNL department for Phil Doughty, a lot of people know Phil. And he was tough on me in the beginning, but I was thankful about it and as it happened, my life is like a lot of people's lives and where small opportunities that come cloaked as challenges end up being something that make a huge impact on your life. And I was given an opportunity to, the assistant to the plant manager actually went off on medical leave and they needed someone to fill in for a couple of months and I was basically told to do it, I wasn't asked. So I stepped up to that job and did that for awhile and obviously it was tough working directly for the plant manager at AK and he was very demanding and it was a good first intro into that world. And I, one day he came to me and he said he had an opportunity at the Coke plant and I'd heard lots of things about the Coke plant while I was working there and I still hear things about the Coke plant, but I said okay and I realize that, I realize now that times where I've had opportunities like that, where I've had a chance to take on a new opportunity and even though it might be a challenge, every time I've said okay and every time it's been something that's been beneficial for me. So I went to the Coke plant and I showed up as a 25-year-old supervisor that was there to supervise people that had been in their jobs 25, 30-plus years and supposed to be their manager. And I learned really quickly that I was only going to be as good as these people allowed me to, only be as successful as these people would allow me to be. So the idea of servant leadership is something that I wasn't aware of at the time, but I came about it almost on accident because I realized that I really needed to start listening to these people. And there's a quote that I like to, I like to remind myself of when I'm working with groups of people, it goes like, "Listen with the intent to understand rather than the intent to reply." And that's what I really tried to do with my people at the Coke plant, I was, because I needed to understand, I needed to understand how they did their jobs, what their issues were, how I could make things better for them so that I could stay employed. So, you know, that was really the, my first introduction to what servant leadership really means and I learned later down the road what the actual title for that is. But it was really just, the first two years there were very tough, obviously, and it was a tough place to work, but the people that I met and the relationships that I made there, these are people that I'm still friends with today, I still keep up with, I still care about, I mean, they were my first work family, so people that I really care about. And they cared about me as well and I found that out once they understood that they could trust me and that, you know, that I would be able to make sound decisions and look out for their best interest. So, and trust is something that comes with time, it's something that you have to work with and that's why the idea of running for office and not being able to meet every single voter or citizen individually, although I'm going to give it a good shot, it's tough to think about because I'm used to having one-on-one relationships and gaining someone's trust over time. Hopefully I'll be able to do that over time with this process. But finished my time at the Coke plant when we had to shut that facility down unfortunately, so it was a sad time and I moved on to the blast furnace and I was there for a short time and then I took a position with Special Metals in Huntington and was able to go back to grad school at that time and got my MBA, then worked for a company in South Carolina, John's Controls, running a lead recycling facility there for a year. Then I got a call about a little plant in Eastern Kentucky, just coincidentally, and that needed a plant manager, which was a short-term goal of mine to have that role by the time I was 35. And I was able to do that. So Vesuvius was the company and the company that I currently work for and Vesuvius is just a wonderful company that's allowed me to do a lot of things since I came in late 2015. And it's, we've really tried to grow our awareness in the community and do as much as we can. Also had the opportunity to become an adjunct instructor at Marshall University. I teach a class once, one night a week, supply chain logistics. I have 40 students every semester and we base it directly off my company, what we do, how we move product through our supply chain and I actually bring the students to the plant and it's been a really great, it's been a great, a great experience to do that. And I have relationships with the educational institutions in our area, ACTC, Ohio Southern, Marshall, obviously. And I'm encouraged by where they want to go with the direction and connecting their students to real-world careers and I think there's a gap that exists there right now and I think that we can do some good work to close that gap and not lose students in between high school, college and their career. There's definitely some work that needs to be done there, so. So when I moved back to Ashland in 2015 to work for Vesuvius, late 2015, I found that Vesuvius was very open to us supporting organizations in the community and it was that point in my life that I decided that I really wanted to get involved in what was going on in the city. I lived downtown at the time in the Henry Clay Building and it was a great place to live, by the way, and it was, you know, I kind of started to reach out, I didn't know where to go. So I, you know, started to reach out and like most of us do now, I got on Facebook to see what was there and I was directed to a group called Build Ashland and I just showed up one day, I didn't know anybody that was associated with the group whatsoever. It was literally the first time I met anyone in Build Ashland. They handed me a trash bag and I brought some gloves, some work and we picked up trash around the transportation center and the riverfront. And, you know, I remember just thinking about, it was a cool feeling, you know, it was a cool feeling to, yeah, we picked up some trash, it was a good thing, but the feeling of citizens that were doing something for their city was a really cool feeling and that's what the core of Build Ashland is and since then we became a nonprofit and done some just amazing things, a scholarship for ACTC now and those people, the great thing about Build Ashland is when we have an event and we have a family show up or we have individuals show up that may have seen pictures online or wherever and they're a little bit hesitant because they don't know anyone and then by the time the event's over, they're laughing and joking and then what, and then their supporters for forever and it's a great thing to see and, you know, I encourage people that, anybody that has questions about Build Ashland or anything like that, show up to a cleanup and talk to everyone for awhile and you don't have to be in an organization to care about the city, you don't have to be in Build Ashland, you can do whatever you want. It's just the idea of civic engagement that is something that Ashland has now. Aside from Build Ashland, I've been proud to be a part of a few city boards with the Urban Renewal Board and also the Ashland Tennis Commission, I've been proud to serve on that commission for a couple of years and the Ashland Tennis Center is something that we just, we should be so proud of because within, on this side of Lexington or Charleston, we have, there's no facility like it. Huntington has no good indoor facility like we have, so the tennis center is really a great resource for us. I'm on the Paramount Board, obviously the Paramount, the Paramount is something that I like to call, it's a place that's disproportionately nice for a town, a city of our size and population usually doesn't have something that nice. Central Park is the same way, it's a park that big and that nice for our citizens is something that most towns our size just don't have and we have two great, great resources there. I'm the Vice President of the Young Professional Association and that's something I talk about a lot, we actually have a very engaged group of young professionals in Ashland and we met about different things throughout the year and when there's a cause to get involved in or some kind of charitable cause or we do the Backpack for Buddies in the fall, people show up and it's really inspiring to see younger people that don't always get the best, you know, get the best input from other people about their involvement. It's great to see them come out and get engaged and we're going to be engaging them in the city soon. CASA Northeastern Kentucky, I'm involved with them as well on their board and unbelievable group. The Ashland Foundation for Child with Disabilities, the Carley Carver has is an unbelievable organization that we support. Frontier, which is a newer nonprofit to the area, my friend Nadia Alley runs or works for Frontier and just a great housing organization that is really, we looked for them to do some great things in Ashland soon. The Young Men's Conference is a group that I'm on the committee of, it's held at ACTC every year and it's basically a conference for 400 high school sophomores to get together in a conference-style setting. People from finance, manufacturing, that's where I represent, other industries show up and the kids basically get to sign up for what breakout session they want to go to and it's, you know, something that a lot of these kids will never be able to experience and they get to see people from the real world and real careers that they may want to go into. So it's, that has been something I've been involved in since it started and it's been, it's been really, really great to see that event grow. I always say that, you know, anybody can be, you know, a member of a board and show up to meetings, I really take it seriously to be a functional board member. I see it as I should be contributing something to the cause that I'm a board member for. I also think it's important for us to look at our nonprofit organizations when we talk about huge issues like the drug issue, the drug epidemic. For me, as someone running for an office like commissioner, I think that it's disingenuous to say that I have a plan to solve that issue. It's a generational issue that's going to take so much work. I think the best support that I can offer as commissioner is to support the people that are on the front lines of these issues with our nonprofits that are working with it every single day. Todd Young at the Neighborhood, Brian Hoebach with River Cities Harvest, just Jerry Compton with the United Way, these people that are, that live it every single day, Mike Maynard with the Bruce Hillcrest Mission, it's, these are people that can tell you exactly what's going on. And I think the role for a city leader in commissioner position would be to support those organizations, obviously, and when something comes in front of us that we need to consider and vote on, get the real data from these people, establish relationships with these people to understand how to effectively vote on these issues that are going to influence what they do. So I think our nonprofit, we have an unbelievable nonprofit base in Ashland and we're very lucky for the people that step up and do the work that they do. And I think as a commissioner, we need to not just acknowledge that, but we need to reach out and talk to these people and the city needs to have direct relationships with them and they do. It's just that that needs to be what drives our decision-making on these issues. Also, very proud to be a part of a new initiative with the city called Destination Ashland, which you may have read about. Destination Ashland is a group, a small group that is working off a very targeted action item list to make some visual changes to downtown Ashland. The goal is to visually change signs, art downtown that, and really develop a brand for our downtown. So you're going to be seeing some significant changes and everything that I talk about with nonprofits and serving in these capacities, these are the things that aren't going to change. Whether I elected commissioner or not, I'm going to continue serving the city of Ashland. I believe that I can more effectively help in a commissioner's role, but my public service and the things I'm a part of aren't going to change regardless of what happens with the election. When I decided to run for office, which, you know, took a lot of time and consideration to decide if I was ready to do it and I could make the commitment, but once I decided and I filed and everyone congratulated me, although I'm not sure what for because I didn't do anything yet, but that's when the work really started to amp up for me and I thought, you know, if I want to be a commissioner, someone that's a representative elected by the citizens of the city, then I had better do my homework and I had better know what I'm talking about. So even though I've worked with the city pretty in-depth for the past few years and I understand most of the processes inside the city, I really started to dig deep and I'm still digging deep and, you know, the first thing I did was print off a copy of the budget, which I carry with me all the time, it's always with me and it's, it looks a little ragged right now because I use it on a daily basis because I want to know how the departments of the city operate, I want to know what that looks like fiscally. Because as a commissioner, as a board of commissioners, so much of what we are going to decide is based in financial decisions. I mean, that's really at the root of what we do. Financial decisions that are geared toward what's best for the citizens. So you have to understand what is inside our budget and a lot of people don't realize what is the financial health of the city and it's actually pretty good. We actually operate, we bring in more money than we spend, the debt that the city has is a fraction of what the state requires a city to have. I think that that, you know, it's unpopular for a new person running for office to say this, but I think we have to say good job to the people that have put us in that situation. Our city manager is stellar, I think he does an excellent job managing our, all of our issues in the city. Our new mayor is going to be, is going to be great, obviously experienced now and he's going to be great for the citizens. I think our commissioners, each one of them, our commissioners, there's never been a time that I've reached out to one of the commissioners and them, and they not be completely helpful, they've, all of them have been completely helpful. The mayor, our current mayor, Mary Gilmore, has just been unbelievable and he's, he's someone that, his door is always open and, you know, whenever someone tells me that and it's something that I'm trying to do, I take advantage of it and the mayor's been incredible to talk to, to help me get myself ready for this position. I don't think that public service or public office and a job like being commissioner should be something that requires on-the-job training. Sure, you're going to learn the experiences of the job, but you should be prepared. There's plenty of, there's plenty of documentation out there, if you choose to seek it, to find out what really happens in the city. Transparency is a word that gets thrown around a lot in elections, every election. If you seek to find what you're looking for with the city, I'm willing to bet that you'll find it. So, you know, if you're seeking transparency, make sure you're utilizing the tools that are transparent for the city. Some issues that, one particular issue that I think that I can have an immediate effect on is, it's incredibly frustrating to me to open up the newspaper and see that the commissioners have been, you know, arguing about an issue that financially is really insignificant. I think prioritizing our time and our efforts towards the things that matter in our, in our, in our city and the initiatives that we've set forth for ourselves and not allowing things to constrain us like small arguments. We should not be letting that get in the way of what is, it's going to take to move us forward. In manufacturing, in the world of manufacturing, we operate by eliminating constraints, you know, when there's a bottleneck in one part of the process, you bust through that bottleneck any way you can and that creates another one somewhere. To me, the small infighting and things that you read about in the paper every now and then, those are constraints to this city getting better and that's something that we can't accept. And sure, you're going to have disagreements and you're going to have, those are constructive teams, good teams have disagreements internally, but at the end of the day, when you make a decision, the entire team's on board and you move forward. And I think that mindset is something that I'm going to be able to bring to the table for the commission and making decisions based on data, making decisions that you can go to the citizens and say, "Here's why I made this decision." I do it every day in my plant. When we make a personnel decision or a process decision, it's based on something that is in black and white and we have data for that. Sure, there are issues socially that can come up that require other considerations and we do that as well, but as for financial decisions, we need to have a data-driven decision method. So Ashland has obviously a few very clear challenges for our future. Obviously, the economic challenge that's come with job losses in manufacturing and medical recently are hits and their losses that impact a lot of families, obviously. I think that for, in being in manufacturing and someone that understands what's going on and what the job numbers for the tri-state look like, it's important to understand and to quantify exactly what those losses mean and where that leaves us totally and I think that the data on, what that actually means for our citizens is important to communicate. I think it's also important to point out that while we've had these big losses, we've had many gains over the past five-year period. We've had new facilities built just across the river and, you know, I tend to look at what's in our, where can our citizens drive for work and, you know, if you have to consider that because even though we lose something in Ashland, there can be opportunities still close for our citizens. The Harverson Walker Plant in South Point that opened, the Steel Ventures Facility that's near my plant in Wartland and there are several other smaller projects that have happened that may not totally total up to the losses that we've seen with AK, but they do make it not be a complete loss and those are all families that now have another career for their providers. So it's important to, that we give our citizens the complete picture so that it's not a total picture of loss. Obviously, we're going to continue to work on recruiting new organizations, expansion for current organizations and we've done a lot of work with my company, we've talked about that a lot with groups like the Alliance and other groups that can encourage that and they do a great job, they have great information, they work. There's these crazy stories about places that they go to make relationships with people and the things, the lengths that they go to to make these things happen. It's a, they're a great organization. But I also like what the city is doing. The city has taken an attitude of, you know, we can't necessarily control what happens with companies and we have to take a mindset that we're going to use the tools available for us to make our city better. And Tiff Financing for the new hotels is an example of that. I live next to the hotel and I can tell you that the city has changed because of that facility. People from all over the world come in and out of that hotel on a daily basis. When I bring people from my company from Europe come over and stay in the hotel, they say, "Wow, it's, Ashland has, you know, a legitimate place to stay now." And it's, it's really encouraging to see and the idea of building ourselves from the inside out and not waiting and dying on the vine, not waiting for companies to come along, doing something for ourselves. As I mentioned, the city financially is in good shape and we do have our challenges, we do have specific issues that we need to address, but what's going on now with Destination Ashland and our comprehensive plan in the city, these are goals that can be achieved and our city can look vastly different very soon and it's something that I know the group is dedicated to making happen. Obviously, we have, we have infrastructure issues as well, we have water lines that give us problems. I've done quite a bit of research into the issue and whenever we have an issue like that, I like to look at other cities, I like to look at where else that happens. We're not the only city in the United States that has water issues. The infrastructure of water lines that was put in years and years, decades ago, it's the same for other places and the idea of the plan that the city has for moving forward and replacing certain lines, that has to be prioritized. I understand that from tackling issues that I have with equipment in my plant. We're not going to put the capital to replace all equipment that needs to be replaced in the plant. You prioritize and you budget accordingly. This year, we have a million dollars in the budget for water line replacements. A lot of people don't realize that. That's to address the issue that the citizens are having with not having water, boiling water advisories. So I think it's important for us as a city and, but also as citizens, to understand the framing of those issues. What exactly is the problem? And when I hear people make generalizations as Ashland is dying or there's nothing here or, you know, it's, it always, you know, causes me to dig a little bit deeper. What does that mean? What is the real situation? And I think that details matter for us to understand how to communicate ourselves and what's going on with the city. Something that the city's had to handle the past couple of years is the pension obligation and taking that into the budget and handling that, which we are still able to have a budget that we bring in more than we spend. And I think it's important as a citizen to understand how our city is reacting to huge commitments like that and we are, we have handled issues like that better than towns around us and it's just a fact. So I think it's, I think it's important that we understand what's really going on in our, in our city. Obviously, the drug issue is another issue that I touched on earlier and how we should engage with our nonprofit base and understand, again, exactly what is the issue. And if I, if I need to go through recovery, where do I go in the city to get recovery? And we need to understand exactly how to tackle that problem and there's nobody, no one better to ask than the people that are dealing with it every day. And one final challenge for us is I think that we can sometimes get in the way of ourselves and I think having one message as a city, as city leaders, again, we discuss, we disagree, we debate, but whatever we decide to do, we move forward with one voice and our citizens, when they speak to one person from the commission or one person from the city and then they speak to another person, they're getting the same message. It's important that we all buy into where we want to go. Growing up in Ashland, I can remember so many memories about playing in the neighborhood and like I mentioned, Charles Russell Playground and so many memories from back then and then transitioning on when I worked at the Coke memories from, from back then. And then transitioning on when, when I worked at the, the Coke plant and met so many families that were from Ashland and, and really started to get an idea of the different families that were around our city. Um, I was able to, um, buy my first house in, in Ashland on Hilton Avenue. And, you know, that's a memory that, that really stands out for me. And so many of these great things that, that, great memories in my life. And, and, and tough memories too, that have come right here in Ashland. And obviously that makes you have a, a connection to, to the town that, that you have with, with nowhere else. And, and that's something that, that will never change for me. Um, I was able to, um, be very fortunate and, and get a good education. I was able to gain great experience in, in my career. And I think that that combination of education and experience is something that I, to be honest, I, I don't know that we've had that before. And, and I think that that combination is something that can be used to make our citizens' lives better. I think critical thinking on, on issues that come before the Commission, um, and understanding what are the repercussions. And the citizens knowing that they have someone that's capable of making the right decision and using a criti- critical thinking mentality when looking at things. Um, I think that, that's what led me to make the decision to, to run for this office. Um, I think that we're at a very interesting pivotal point in Ashland's history right now. I think that obviously we've had some tough things happen, but like Mary Gilmore always says, we're, we're survivors. Um, but we have the opportunity to not just survive. We have the opportunity to thrive. And, um, there are some good things that are happening. And like I've mentioned, whether, whether I'm in this office or not, um, there's, I'm gonna work towards making these things happen. And, and in a couple of years, Ashland's gonna be a different city than what it is now. And that optimism has to be communicated to our citizens. Sure, we've got people that are dealing with tough issues. And we've gotta understand ways to help them and get them through those trou- those troubles. But we have to not lose the opportunity to, while we have people engaged, we have young people engaged, to take this city to the next level. I talked to people from other towns. Um, Mayor Cramblett, that was just elected in Ironton, um, a young mayor now. And, and we talk pretty regularly about issues that he has. And, you know, other towns have started to look at Ashland for the, what we've done and the, the developments that we've made in the past few years as, you know, a town that's doing something. And, and we're, 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 we've got momentum and it's time to now take that next step. And, and I think that I can definitely do that. I think that there, at the, at the core of what a Commissioner does, I think a Commissioner should be able to satisfy certain requirements. A Commissioner should be able to articulate the citizens of, what, who are your citizens? What, what, what makes up the citizens in your city? What does your financial situation look like? How are you, how is your city, the health of your city's finances? Um, I think that a Commissioner should be able to give a very good summary of that to not just citizens, but people outside of Ashland. Um, and I think that the citizens should have Commissioners that, let's say, next week a Fortune 500 company decides to come into Ashland and they wanna meet with the city leaders in a closed-door room. Are you gonna be comfortable with, with the city leaders that are meeting with that company? I think that's, that has to be on the mind of, of our voters and, and our citizens, not just our voters. But, um, I think that all of those factors, um, play into, to why I think I'm, I'm ready for this job. I know that I'm ready for this job. And, and I know that I can make our citizens' lives better. My name's Josh Blanton and I'm candidate for Ashland City Commissioner.